County strives to maintain a high quality of life for all citizens through sound fiscal management and legislative actions. In an ongoing effort to increase transparency, your Board of Supervisors holds public meetings to garner citizen input before making important decisions. Here's tonight's meeting agenda. Stay tuned. The Board of Supervisors meeting will begin shortly.
I'd like to call to order this evening the James City Service Authority Board of Directors' regular meeting. Roll call, please, Mr. Powell.
Mr. Hippel.
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Here.
Ms. Eisenhour.
Ms. Larson.
Here.
And Ms. Knoll.
Here.
We have a presentation tonight, a proclamation for Douglas G. Lang. Mr. Powell.
Yes, ma'am.
Present.
Mr. Lang, would you join me, please? I think all of you know that Mr. Lang retired from the James City Service Authority on January 1st. I think you all also know that he retired with 44 years of service to the James City Service Authority, which is the longest tenure in the Service Authority's history. So I'm very pleased tonight that we can be here to recognize his many years of dedicated outstanding service to the Service Authority. One of the things that I find fascinating about Mr. Lang's history with the Service Authority is that when he was hired by the Service Authority, he was the seventh employee of the organization, and today we have 107 employees. So the amount of change that he has seen and been a part of is really impressive. And in addition to that, he's mentored many, many employees through the years, and the Service Authority just isn't the same without you, Doug. On a personal note, I'm going to have to find someone else to be my go-to guy when I want to talk about baseball. So I'm already missing that with you not being there, Doug. But we do have a proclamation that I would like to read to honor your service, Doug. Commendation of service for Mr. Douglas Lang. Whereas Mr. Douglas G. Lang has been employed by the James City Service Authority for 44 years, beginning October 1st, 1979, and whereas Mr. Lang retired from the Service Authority effective January 1st, 2024, and upon his retirement, Mr. Lang worked longer for the Service Authority than any employee in its history. And whereas Mr. Lang began his career by assisting with a mosquito control program and later became the supervisor of both the well facilities and lift stations, and whereas Mr. Lang was then promoted to foreman and eventually superintendent of wastewater collection, and Mr. Lang was involved in the inception of the Service Authority's maintenance, operation, and management program. And whereas Mr. Lang introduced the use of new technology to the Service Authority, purchasing a vacuum pressure cleaning truck and a closed-circuit television van, both of which are still used daily today. And whereas Mr. Lang mentored many employees during his tenure with the Service Authority, leaving a lasting legacy, now therefore it be resolved that, and I'm reading this on behalf of Ms. Knoll, that I, Barbara Knoll, Chairman of the Board of Directors of the James City Service Authority, hereby honor and commend Mr. Douglas Lang for the tremendous service he has given to the James City Service Authority. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the County of James City, Virginia, to be affixed this 9th day of January 2024. Be it further resolved that the Board of Directors of the James City Service Authority wishes to express its gratitude and best wishes to Mr. Lang on his retirement. Lang. Congratulations. So, Mr. Lang, that's for you. That's a signed copy of the proclamation that I just read, and this is your certificate of retirement.
Oh, so it's official now.
It's official now, yes. And if you would like to say a few words, you certainly can.
I just want to tell the citizens of James City County, we do serve some people in York County, we do serve some people in the city of Williamsburg. I appreciate the opportunity to meet the needs of our water and the wastewater customers. I appreciate the years that the board gave to us and allowed me to work for y'all. I hope that everything I've done, I try to do the best of my ability. I try to teach people so that they, I always told them, wherever your standard is, try to raise it higher because people's only going to go as high as what you show them. And anyway, I appreciate it. I thank y'all and hope the new board nothing but the best in future years.
Mr. Lang, would you like a picture? Would you like a photo with everybody?
Oh, sure. Y'all don't mind a spider web, do they?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lang. Mr. Powell, do we have any speaker cards this evening?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Can move on to the consent calendar. Tonight's consent calendar consists of the following items, if minutes for adoption.
Move the adoption to the consent calendar.
You don't need to do a roll call for consent calendar sake. All those in favor?
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have public hearing, conveyance of real poverty, 7311A Richmond Road. Mr. Powell will give a staff presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Service Authority owns a very small amount of acreage at Nordge Elementary School for a well facility which is no longer needed. The school system conveyed this property to the Service Authority in 1986 at no cost for this well facility. They're now requesting that the Service Authority convey it back to them to facilitate the construction of a pre-kindergarten facility at that site. Staff recommends approval of the resolution that authorizes the general manager to execute the documents necessary for the conveyance of the property back to the school system.
Does anyone have questions for staff? Questions? Does anybody care to speak on this?
We do not have any speaker cards, but if you could...
We'll open the public hearing.
Yes.
We'll open the public hearing. Does anybody have anything to say? The speakers will close, have a motion to close a public hearing.
I'm sure.
And does the board have any discussion?
I'd like to move the adoption of the resolution.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan. Ms. Eisenhour. Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Ms. Knoll.
Aye.
Under board considerations, we have a contract award, job order, construction contract services. Mr. Powell.
An RFP was advertised for firms to perform job order construction contract services on an as-needed basis for the Service Authority, for the county, and for the school system. A broad range of construction services can be provided under this contract, including new construction, repair, renovation, alteration, or maintenance services. Three firms submitted proposals, and TMG Construction was selected as the most qualified. The initial contract term, if the board approves this contract, is for one year with the option of two additional one-year renewals. Under the terms of the agreement, an individual project cannot exceed $500,000, and the total amount of work during each term of the contract shall not exceed $6 million. Staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Does anybody have questions for staff? No. Discussion under motion, please.
I'll move the motion.
Mr. Powell, call the board.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan. Ms. Eisenhour. Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Ms. Knoll.
Aye.
The second one this evening, a contract award, operations center, data room, air conditioner replacement, $189,773. Mr. Powell.
Thank you. The air conditioner unit serving the data room and the JCSA operations center have reached the end of their useful lives and require replacement. Quote was solicited from Work Mechanical Group that currently has an annual HVAC support services contract with the county, and this contract contains cooperative purchasing language that allows JCSA to purchase from this contract. Staff negotiated a contract in the amount of $189,773, which was determined to be fair and reasonable through consultation with general services and comparisons to similar projects. Work Mechanical has completed similar projects for JCSA in the past. Staff recommends approval of the resolution authorizing award of the contract to Work Mechanical for $189,773.
Any questions for staff?
Just for approval on the contract award.
Mr. Powell, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Ms. Knoll.
Any board requests or directives?
Only, I just wanted to say, thank you. Forty-four years is just tremendous.
Yeah.
And, I mean, that is just a volume of information that is walking out the door, and I know you know that and feel that. But I talked to Mr. Lang at your holiday lunch, which you were so gracious to invite us to, and I appreciate that. And he still has so much passion for his, what he's done for JCSA, and Doug, I think a lot of that can be attributed to you. You are a wonderful leader. But not telling you how to do your job, but I said to him, I said, I would love to see him connect with high schoolers in our community, or to explain about a job at JCSA and what that means. So if there's ever an opportunity, I hope that we have some sort of way to use Mr. Lang if he's willing in that capacity, because I think that any type of ambassadorships that we can do like that, the better. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. I appreciate those comments. I'll talk to Mr. Lang about his willingness.
Talk to him quick before he gets him out of your interest.
I want to see him tomorrow morning. Okay. Anything else? We have a report, Mr. Powell.
Just briefly, I don't normally comment on the dashboard, but I do, since this is the six-month mark, the halfway mark, I do usually like to say something. Everything is pretty, everything is pretty much on schedule. There aren't, there isn't anything in there that is of any concern. The only thing that's a little out of whack is the tap fees, but it's, they're out of whack this year differently than they are previous years. We're pretty much at or have exceeded our tap fee estimates for the year, which is, which is a good thing. It reflects how difficult it is to estimate tap fees, but everything else is pretty much on schedule, and we're, you know, we're ahead of our estimates on the tap fees.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I don't...
To adjourn?
Okay.
To adjourn, yeah.
Move to adjourn.
Yeah.
Move to adjourn to January 9th at, I'm sorry.
January 19th.
January 19th.
Nine AM.
For the budget retreat.
Yep, 9:00 AM at the JCSA Operations Building. Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Ms. Knoll.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent job for your first meeting.
My first meeting.
Way to go. Call this meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors' regular meeting to order. Mr. Stevens, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Knoll.
Present.
Ms. Knoll represents the Stonehouse District. Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Mr. Hippel represents the Powatin District. Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan represents the Roberts District. Mr. Eisenhour?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhour represents the Jamestown District and his vice chair to the board. Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Larson represents the Berkeley District and is chair to the board, sitting to my far left, Adam Kizman, County Attorney, and I'm Scott Stevens, County Administrator, and it is my pleasure to be clerk to the board.
Thank you so much. Next, we will have a moment of silence, followed by our pledge of allegiance. Our pledge this evening will be led by Charlotte "Charlie" Jenkins, and she's a fifth grader at Matthew Whaley, and Supervisor Eisenhour will give some more information. Thank you.
Yeah, Charlie is going, goes to Matthew Whaley Elementary. She lives in my district over on, off of Route 5. It's, her parents are Julie and William Jenkins, and she has siblings, brother, I guess, is William Jenkins, second grade, and Benjamin Jenkins, first grade. So she's the big sister. So she is active in soccer, tennis, and swimming. Her clubs are Cooking Club, No Place for Hate, running for SCA. She's running for the student council, I guess, president, floor director on the morning news team, and she's the vice president in fourth grade for the SCA. And her programs, she participates in through the county, is Battle of the Books at the library. So we will ask Charlie to give us a moment for silence and then lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got, we've got a whole series of little presents for you here. Here is, I'm going to give you the whole thing. It's your little certificates in there, and then there's your pin, and you have some of our little James City County love stickers. So, thank you so much.
Do you have a picture?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Real natural for SCA president.
Yes, so poised.
Thank you.
Mr. Stevens, I understand you would like to make an introduction.
Yes, ma'am. If I could ask Barb Watson to come to the podium. Chair members of the board, I would like to formally introduce and recognize Barbara "Barb" Watson as our new Director of Social Services, replacing Rebecca "Van Root," who left us in December. Ms. Watson is well-known in James City County. She has lived in this area since 1967, is a graduate of Lafayette High School, and has worked with James City County for 37 years. She must have started when she was 12 or 15.
Of course.
All right, all right. Ms. Watson has served in the leadership capacity in James City County since 2001, when she began working as the Director of Neighborhood Connections. Since 2006, she has served as the Assistant Director of Social Services. Ms. Watson has a master's degree in public administration from Strayer University and a bachelor's degree in governmental administration from Christopher Newport University. She has served on numerous boards and committees for community organizations, lending her expertise on strategic planning and building collaborative relationships. She is well-known and highly respected among the social services community and brings a great deal of leadership and supervisory experience to this role. You know, I feel that we are very fortunate to have someone with her experience, reputation, and commitment to this community ready to step in to this role. So for me, the decision was very easy. She has been an integral part of the department's past success, and I look forward to working more closely with her to meet the needs of her residents. I would ask her if she would like to say a few words. She assured me she would say something, so I'll turn it over to Ms. Watson.
Good evening to everyone. First, I'd just like to say I am really excited about my new role as Social Services Director. I have this awesome team of very talented professionals, and I'm really anxious to, to lead them into the future. I really love working for James City County, and I guess you should know that, because otherwise I wouldn't have been here for 37 years. But I take my job very seriously. I think the work of social services is very difficult and very challenging, but also very important, and some of the jobs that we do, no one else can do. Only social services can provide those things. And so I look forward to continuing to meet the needs of the most vulnerable of James City County. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. Before we go to our presentation, I just wanted to take a brief moment and, first of all, say thank you to my colleagues for their trust in me to serve as the chair for the next year, but also to thank Mr. Hippel for his service this past year as our chair. He's done an outstanding job, as he always does. So thank you so much for your... And with that, our presentation this evening is James City County's FY 2023 Audit Presentation. This will be given by Rob Churchman, Partner Cherry Beckett, LLP. Good evening.
You have a full agenda. I see a lot of familiar faces from JCSA. I've been promised I'd be get out earlier this time than last time, which is fine.
We'll do our best.
That's okay. I hope you, it'll be warm. Yes, well, I'm going to be quick because I'm afraid Oz may come and take the roof off some of these places, because it was all over the crazy on 64. But thank you for having me tonight. As I presented in front of you for the JCSA, as, under the audit standards, which are global standards, and not just for governments, and not just for corporations, I'm required to give certain communications to those charged with governance at the beginning and end of each audit. I have a slide deck that, frankly, it's going to look boring to you, it's very similar to what I showed you before, because again, the standards are the same across the board. Do I use the mouse? Okay. Is it just clicking to the right or scrolling? Ooh, that's sensitive. Okay. My agenda items here, and a lot of the items I will talk about are boilerplate required headers or terminology. Some will look ominous. You'll see some words like disagreements, you'll see some words like fraud, but that's because those topic areas are required, even though they're not applicable. If I didn't find anything, didn't have any disagreement, I'm still required to possibly affirm that to you each year. So I'm going to go straight down this list here, I'm not going to read everyone out to you. I do make my slide decks such that someone who's not here can utilize it later and get a good understanding of what we talked about, and then also, if they have a question for me, they can always call me. My last slide deck has my phone number and contact information. So my client service team, just as it was for JCSA and the other components of the county that we serve, I'm the overall partner in charge of all services to the county and its entities and so forth, worthy of fiscal agent for and such. Laura Hart is my second reviewer, my quality reviewer, and then Mike and Lisa are my, are my core team, not the only people that serve you, but they're my core team of basically being down in the weeds, getting the work done, and getting the, getting the testing completed. Most important thing, what you want to hear from me? This slide and a couple of slides right after that. You hired us to audit your statements in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and some other standards, federal standards and state standards, and we're required to let you know whether you thought the statements were fairly presented in all mature respects, which we did. We issued unmodified opinions dated yesterday. When you look at those statements, you can have comfort, because of my work I've done, that you have some great numbers in there. I only wrote down a couple of them, but your net position for the overall first statement in your statements, the government-wide, went up 13% to $51 million. Your general fund was up 16.9 overall fund balance, and that's actually even better than what your budget was. It's up 7.6 over your budgeted, what you thought you would end up at the end of the year. And then what's really important to most of my entities is that part of fund balance in the general fund that's unassigned. I don't ever want to call it a rainy day fund, but it's that money that you have not restricted for any other purposes, that you know that you have if something comes up that you need. And that actually rose almost 21% to 70, to 79.2 as opposed to 65.2. So great results there for the health in having those pools available to use, the health of going forward, of what you need to do since things come up, projects come up, and so forth. As I mentioned, we have also have to audit under, not only government auditing, these are... As I mentioned, we have also have to audit under not only government auditing standards, which for those of you who may have heard this before, we call it the yellow book. It's just because the feds made it a yellow book as opposed to an orange book or a blue book. Also, the state has specifications for authorities, boards of commissions, things in the area like cash and investment testing, some social services testing, some the VRS testing falls underneath there. We report on that separately and so forth. We noted no material weaknesses in that and under those standards that we need to report to you under those standards with regards to financial reporting and so forth. We did note one material weakness that is not necessarily government standards, basically under the overall financial reporting process related to the restatement of fiduciary activities from the prior year. And I'll go into greater detail on that, what that was all about, on a upcoming slide. Okay. Single audit. Now it's called uniform guidance. Old days, A133, single audit, where to test your programs. And those programs change from year over year. They didn't, two programs didn't change this year because the Fed still required it, your coronavirus, state fiscal relief, and also your asset money for education. But for those programs and the other programs, we noted no findings to report, which is what you want to hear, and A+ report on that. I don't always get to say that at every client, because there are times when things come up and something just doesn't get done right, or an invoice gets lost, or something gets a procured according with the standard and so forth, but that did not happen here. There was no findings to report on you, and that's what you want to hear from your auditor. In auditing, we have the concept of corrective statements and uncorrective statements. Corrective statements are when, as we're doing your audit, we note something that is in a court that is not absolutely recorded in accordance with GAAP, but really should be. And so we suggest to the client, we really need to make this change. It's not uncommon at all, and it can happen for various reasons. We had one here that, again, it goes back to my earlier comment on the restatement of fiduciary funds. Again, I'll get to more detail on that when I get back to that actual slide. We had no uncorrective statements. What are those? Well, those are when you're going through you're going through your testing, you find something, generally accepted accounting principles will say, you know, this really should be recorded this way, but it's so either qualitatively or quantitatively immaterial, we don't record it, because you can't record every, you can't go back and record every $25 prepaid. You're never gonna get your books closed. Your whole system is gonna get bogged down, and you'll never be able to operate and get numbers out of the system so you can operate and manage the county. This is purely a definition from the standards of what internal controls are, and when you have a deficiency, and basically what a deficiency is, it doesn't allow those doing their normal course of business to either prevent, I'm sorry, detect or prevent and detect and fix something that's not going through the control cycle properly. Maybe something's not getting approved by all levels that don't need to be approved is a common example of how you could have a deficiency. This is purely out of the standards. I didn't make up any of this, and this is another example of how I'd like to have the slides in here that kind of tell people what we kind of talked about in context in case they weren't here before. Okay, oop, stop being so sensitive. Doesn't like me. There we go, okay. As I mentioned earlier, we had one material weakness in financial reporting, and it relates to the fact that under the standards, we have very little leeways audit. The standards say if such and such occurs, then this is how you report it. Two years ago, in '21, we weren't your auditors, but I'm sure your auditors came up here and talked to you about how they implemented, actually, the county implements, because they're your financial statements, but they looked at the implementation of a new standard for fiduciary activities. Those are items where you may hold money for, common examples, holding money for inmates, if you're running a jail operation, or if you're holding money for social services participants. You're holding it as a fiduciary for them, in essence, sort of like, not a great term, but like a bank account, like a trustee for them. And these standards came out because the North Carolina people who set standards decided there was not enough consistency and comparability across the whole universe on what was getting reported and what wasn't getting reported, and then what was getting reported and how it was getting reported. So they put out these standards to basically shrink the universe of what you would call you're having a fiduciary responsibility over. And so when that came out, because the county has four fiscal agents that you do that you support, detention commission and regional jail and so forth, those numbers were shown in that particular year as basically showing all of their activities for the entire year, for those entities, almost like their own standard on financial statement. Concept in the standard, in paragraph 12, I'm not, just because I'm a geek, I remember some of these paragraph numbers, there's a concept of control. And what Gadsby said, again, from Connecticut, if you don't have control over that piece of the operation, then you shouldn't record it in your financial statements and therefore give the impression to a reader that you have control over it. And the example of that would be pension assets. Don't really have the control over pension asset. The Virginia retirement system sets the pension requirements. They accept your contributions, but they're really, their plan is really holding that, they're really the trustee for those pension assets, whether it be yourselves or whether it be the fiscal agent entity. So what we determine this year is that we should be, we should take off those items off of what's in your statements, C1 and C2, so that all the only thing the readers really see is what you really have control over, and that's basically investments in cash and such. So what that did was made a change to the beginning balance, so basically correcting last year's any balance, which becomes this year's beginning balance, of removing roughly almost a little bit more than half of what was on there before. $29 million, and it was all capital assets, pension, OPEB, lease receivables, liabilities, so forth like that, things you don't really have at your level have control over. It's really at their level that they have the control. So again, the whole concept was to take out any or maybe remove any confusion a reader may have if they looked at the statement and saw all these things like capital, again, capital assets, OPEB liability and so forth, that they would think you had control over, but in your responsibility level, you did not. So that change was made. It happens. It's not something that's uncommon. When something later gets determined, well, we really didn't follow, or we really got better information now, so we're gonna make a change. It's presented in your financial statements as it's supposed to be, basically as a footnote 18, which explains what I've just told you. And then back on the statement, it basically says, here's here's last year's number, but it's been restated, just to tell the reader, okay? Hopefully that, I didn't want to bog you down with too much, too much. I do tend to teach a lot, so I had to stop myself. But we have recorded, it has been presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and therefore we had to report to the reader again that this did occur in the current year. Now, getting on to, as you remember from JCSA, I call this my Partridge Family set of slides because of the old bus they used to drive around with, with the peacock on it. These are areas that are required, I call them silos, that the standards say, listen, Rob, you need to tell them about this, even if it's just to say it's not applicable, because there's gonna be things in here, especially on the last slide of this section, where I talk about going concern. Really applicable to corporate entities, venture capitalists, ByteDance, Bitcoin, but it's not necessarily overly applicable to governments. And I have to positively affirm that to you. So when you look at your statements, you have a footnote one behind the main set of statements. It goes to, we call the summary of significant accounting policies. It tells the reader at a high level what kind of policies you have in place for capitalizing your assets, for when you record tax receivables and the revenue related to them, 45 days and so forth. So we go through there, and we have to tell you, because the standards assume that you're not down in the dirt, down in the weeds on everything that's going on in the finance office. So when there is a change in policy, I need to tell you about that. Well, the change in policy this year was really nothing they did. It's what was forced upon them by generally accepted accounting principles. So they had to record this year some new requirements for conduit debt, just like the EDA did, and also for, last year, you had new requirements for leases, just standard old straight ahead, common leases you would think of, copiers or school buses and so forth. This year, it's like a lease, I call it the cloudy lease. It's if you have any arrangements for Microsoft subscriptions and stuff like that, they wanted you to put those on the books this year, whether or not, generally, you're not a lease or in that, you're usually the leasee, but they wanted to put those on the books this year, in the hope, Gadsby, what they're always trying to do is get the greatest, fullest picture of your operations into the financial statements, so a reader can have the best knowledge that they can attain from that on how your operations are going. So those are the only change in policy we're aware of. We're not aware of any other, any other modified policies from prior year. Related parties. Very, very important for all types of entities. I would argue, very, very important for corporate entities more than governments, only in one respect, in that related parties, what we're required to look for is to make sure we understand who you have a related party with and what it's there for. Is it for something that you would normally, we would normally expect you to need? Is it arms-length transaction? Is it open and on the full disclosure? I make a joke, I made a joke about Bitcoin a second ago. Well, they had a related party, Sam Bankman-Fried had a related party with Alameda Research, where he borrowed $65 billion, and nobody knew about it, because it wasn't in any disclosure to the investments, investors and so forth. So when they had a call on that, and basically on or about November 11th, and they couldn't come up with the cash, he went under within a month. And his $30 million penthouse in Bermuda that he was calling his office is being foreclosed, and his parents cosigned on their on their house to get in some money. So that relationship wasn't known, so the investors who put money into it like crazy, whether it be individual people or public investment trusts and so forth, they didn't know about it. And so when that went south, they very well could have lost everything. They think they thought about 16 billion of it, that they can pull back, clawback, but that's why related parties are important. I'm not aware of anything that you have a related party with that would make me come to you and say, you need to know about this, that would make me think that it's not normal business operations for you, that would make me think that it wasn't part of a fully above-board contractual relationship or memorandum of understanding and so forth. But again, I'm required to let you know that positively, that I don't know of any, I didn't see anything through our test work that I would need to tell you about. Unusual transactions. It does happen for governments, happens more often for corporates. You know, Virginia, there's not too many, I'll call esoteric things that governments can get into, investment-wise, or relationship-wise, or agreement-wise and so forth. So, but if I ever did come across something, if you got into, if you, and usually, I would not be the first one telling you this, but if I felt maybe I needed to tell you anyway, so you know I knew, you'd usually know about these things before you're getting into them. Maybe it's a public partner, private partnership. For, you know, Richmond is very, very popular right now for sports complexes. Chesterfield has a big one, Henrico's got a big one coming in. We're getting, we're putting an amphitheater down on the river. So they're significant. I guess they're kind of unusual, because they only come around hopefully every 20 or 30 years. I'm sure they're audited. I told, I'm Chesterfield and Henrico's audited. I'd tell them in my meeting that I'm aware of those transactions. And so, but I'm not aware of anything here that I need to feel, that I feel I have to tell you, and that you've told me, management behind me, that I need to know about. But again, I'm required to positively affirm that to you. Unless I was standing here in front of the school board and talking to them about their school activity funds, which the little lady here earlier probably, her club she's talking about probably raises money, fundraisers and so forth, that do things, your statements are gonna have an estimate in it. There's no set of statements that are non-cash, that are anything but cash basis. They're all gonna have some kind of, you can't tie everything down to a deposit, you can't tie everything down to a check that was cut, you can't tie everything down to maybe a confirmation. There's gonna be estimates. The third one there is probably the most common one for you that you can think of, that's really out of your control for the most part, your actuarial estimates. You have actuaries that either from the state or from Bolton, that will tell you what your, how your liability went up or down, or asset went up or down this year. They'll tell you the investment rate of return and so forth. We're required to look and make sure it makes sense to us that, in that particular case, that they are qualified to give you guidance on what your liabilities and assets are, but also to make sure, and this is more of a corporate area, make sure you're not making, you're not playing with your estimates from year over year. If you're in a venture capital firm, and you need your, you need your EBITDA to go up, you may change an estimate, so you get a better number, and therefore you get better financing, or maybe you get more money in your pocket. And so, nothing like that happened here. We look to make sure that your estimates are comparable, consistent from year over year, especially in the first year of serving you, and also make sure that they make sense in accordance with your peers, that you're not saying you're gonna get a 25% return on this item that three other peers have on their books at 7%. Nothing like that happened here, but I'm required to positively affirm that to you. This is, these are statements that are, they're very straightforward and boilerplate, very boring, but they make us required to tell you that we think the statements that are presented are neutral, consistent, and clear, in accordance with what GAAP is, and also for a reader to understand. There's not a lot of, not a lot of things on one page. It has to go seven pages back to bring it back to the third page beforehand and kind of go circular route. We saw nothing like that. We think they're very straightforward. We think the statements, disclosures themselves are very well laid out and very easy for someone with whatever level of financial acumen they have to follow and understand what they're trying to follow and understand, and that there was nothing that was particularly sensitive in your statements. I have seen some large entities, I actually was the auditor of District of Columbia for a while, they can have some estimates that are just really, really mind-blowing, because they're into so many weird, going back to significant unusual transactions and so forth, that we would have to make sure that those estimates were being disclosed, because they would be sensitive to a user, especially in that particular kind of case, the capital markets, because they're trying to understand your fluidity of your financial resources as such. Okay. Far right side is what's important here. Left-hand side is something I just have to tell you. We are auditors, and we have audit standards. There is also standards for things that are maybe done by a person who could be an auditor, but they're not auditing. It's called non-attest. In your particular case, you have a form that has to be submitted electronically to the feds, and the form says, the federal numbers that are in your ACFA are X. Finances put them in there, into the website, and both finance and myself will say, yes, they agree. And yes, that they they are properly presented. Yes, all the information that you require for the website is there and so forth. We check it all off. We electronically approve it and go forth. I don't give any opinion of stuff, just saying, yes, they agree, but I have to make you aware that that non-attest, non-audit function does occur. What's more important on this slide is the right-hand side. Independence. We give you, what did I tell, what did I do? Three, two, three, if you, the auditor can't count, 10 pieces of paper for your for your ACFA, opinions on such and such. If I had any reason to think that my firm wasn't independent of you, either in reality or in perception, they're both equally as important, my firm, myself personally, members on my team, if my wife was your director of finance, I'd have trouble. My independence would both, probably be both perception and and reality. But we're not aware of anything that would cause us to obscure our objectivity, which is what an events is really getting to. So therefore, our pieces of paper can be relied upon. We are objective. We've kept it. And I joke, I kind of joke, but I always like to talk about the qualitative aspects, too, because that's just as important. Again, I made a joke about my wife. If I had a cousin who was your third payroll clerk, working in one particular area, I had nothing to do with her, nothing to do with them, but somebody could say, well, you know what, they had the same last name, or I know that they're related. So Rob can't be independent, he can't be objective. And that just, that is just as powerful as me owning stock in a corporation that my company just got as a client. So they're both as important. We're not aware of anything that causes us to not be independent, therefore the pieces of paper again that I gave you are valid and very, under the standards what you wanted to have for me. Okay, I'm hurrying up. I know you got a full agenda. I can't see the clock from here. That's probably pretty good, but wait, oh, 5:37, okay. All right. Two more slides like this, and then one final slide. Difficulty, these headers are required headers. Difficulties in counter disagreements, auditor consultation, management representation. We encounter no significant difficulties in getting information from finance department, from Ms. McCarthy and her crew. We did have some delays in getting information from Commissioner Revenue for some of the tax steps were required to do under the auditor of public accounts, but we did, we did get to that point where we could do our procedures, but it did take longer than when then we, both us and finance had hoped it would, it would. If I ever had a disagreement with management about how to present something, disclose something, report something, record something that was material, and it was causing, I'll use the word friction, or causing us to not get our work done until it was resolved, I had to let you know about that. Nothing like that happened here. If I had to go outside my team for maybe, it just happened to me two years ago, I had a significant new client, a state authority, that had to go out, they got a big donation of land, they had to have it valued. And so we said, listen, we're gonna go out to our valuation people that are outside of my team, because I don't do that for a living. I'm a caveman auditor. I'm not a valuation expert with ratios and all that kind of stuff. So I had to tell my client, listen, we're gonna go outside. This is what this is what my team's doing. I'm actually, I'm paying for it, because they're part of, they're part of my audit process, but I mean to make them aware that I did go outside of my core team to get guidance, in that particular case, justification, not justification, but ratification, that the evaluation was proper. And then the far right is something that most people don't understand, unless they're in this process, that they are your financial statements. And so therefore, the standards require me to get a piece of a letter from you, usually three pages long, basically saying, representing to me a lot of things about your ownership of the statements, that they're your statements, that you've told me about any litigation I should know about, that you've told me about any, maybe you've had a federal monitoring team come in and do some testing on one of your programs and so forth. If I was ever to present that letter, especially very indicative in the first year of a client, because they are very boring and clients get used to seeing them each year, and the client said, I can't represent to this, Rob. I can't represent this one or that one, that one. Maybe there's a good reason. Maybe it just wasn't absolutely applicable, and we used a boilerplate thinking it was. But if it was something that really is applicable, and I'd have to have cause to say, why can't you represent to me this relatively straightforward thing that every firm in America uses the same bullet points? Is there something I don't know that I should know that would impact my decision on the favorite representation of the statements? That did not happen here. I provided it to county administrator and Ms. McCarthy. They read it over. I didn't hear from them, but I presume they talked to each other and said, hey, this is pretty standard. This is what all the other firms use. And they sent it back to me. But I have to make you aware that I received that, because I wasn't, if I didn't receive that, the standards say that I lacked in my job, and I can't give my opinion out without finding out why. Okay? Okay, last slide of all this, Joe. Management consultations, not really applicable to you, but if I ever found out that you guys didn't want to keep me as your auditor, and because you're gonna go down to three other audit firms to get the answer on a question or a presentation you want to do that may not be totally prop, this is much more of a corporate area, corporate America area, venture capitalists and so forth. Shopping the opinion. It's like when you're, I have three kids. My son, my first daughter was always like, nah, nah, nah. My son would always be like, oh, I can have mom first. My son would always be like, oh, I can, I can ask mom first. Because if I don't get the answer from, from her, dad's a little, little softer on certain things. So he shopped the opinion sometimes with his parents. Didn't happen here, but I had to make you aware if it did. We talk also through the year. They, they, they want us to specifically tell you that we don't just go away and, and not see you for X number of months and then come back and all of a sudden do it all and be done. We talk with our clients about the year and things may come up. I have county administrators call me and say, listen, Rob, I went to this conference and this topic came up in this long dissertation, but you know anything about it? Or is anybody in Virginia doing this? Or have you heard anything more about this? We welcome that communication. It helps us understand what's, what's going on with you, but it also helps the audit to be more efficient and effective. If somebody comes to me and says in September, oh, we issued this really esoteric debt document back in May, but didn't want to tell you about it until now, until the audit started, like, well, jeez, if we had talked about it in May, I could have already done my work for it or given you some guidance on how to present it and so forth, as opposed to in the crunch of the fall. So just to make you aware, we do talk on, the, the things we talk about are proper, they're proper financial accounting and reporting and presentation and so forth throughout the year. And these last two are very ominous. I'll be very quickly on them. We are an auditor, we are not hired to audit for fraud. The standards say no. We're required to be what's called professionally skeptical, which means keep our eyes open, do our procedures. If something comes up and it, at first it looks like it might be a little quote unquote weird, look into it. A lot of times what happens is that we're missing a piece of the puzzle. We're missing a piece of, of the chain of communication, of the chain of ownership, of the chain of responsibility. And we're like, oh yeah, that makes sense now, that, we, we understand that. If, if it doesn't, if it doesn't stop there, then we're required to come to you and say, listen, we, we don't know what, something's going on here, we're not quite sure what it is. We think you need to know about it. Didn't happen here. I have clients where I've had that happen. I've had clients, I had non clients that called me on a Friday afternoon and by Monday morning, I was signing an engagement letter and I was, I was eventually finding the, the second largest government fraud in America in Front Row, Virginia. She's told us $27 million over a period of 20 years, which is kind of hard to do when you only have a budget of eight million a year. So you've got to be pretty efficient. But that did not happen here, but I wanted to make you aware that a lot of people perceive an auditor, they should have found this. Well, we're not hired to audit for fraud unless you tell me, come on in and I need you to look at this. And then going concern, it's more corporate, as you can imagine. It does happen. There were some cities during, before the crisis, before pandemic crisis and so forth in California that went under. They got absorbed back by the county, Los Angeles County actually, because their pension liabilities, which were contractually agreed to, got so onerous, they couldn't fund the police corps, police force. So they had to basically disband the police force and have the county sheriff come in to be their police. They, as, in essence, they were going concern that went out of business and became part of Los Angeles County as opposed to, I forget their name now, doesn't matter. So doesn't happen here, have no reason to think you're not going, you're not going to exist for another 12 months. So that's, that's what the standard says. These next three slides, I'm not going to go over. I just basically cut and paste out of our opinion, these three paragraphs. Your statements are big. The middle part of your statements is what I audit, and my opinion tells you that, says these statements in these footnotes. The front of your statements is your, what we call other information, your introductory, your transmital letter, your, your GFO certificate and so forth. The back part of your statements are your 10-year statistical sections and so forth. We don't, we are not required to audit those, but I tell you those in my, in my opinion, that's why I put these up here. And then also your management discussion analysis area, where you talk to the reader about how, how the year went. I'm not required to audit that either. But again, this paragraph is in my opinion, most people, when they look at our three-page opinion, they look at the first three or four paragraphs. And these are in the back. So I'd like to make you aware that these are back there explaining to the reader more about what we did and what we are giving assurance on and what we're not giving assurance on. And then this last one, if you're ever bored and you need, need to get some sleep, next year, another part of Omnibus 999 is out. It's applicable, not, not highly applicable to you at all. What would be applicable to you is that the Gatsby 101 and 25 will likely change some of your disclosures for your, for your vacation, compensated absence and so forth. I just like to make you aware these things are out there as those charts of governance, that the, the people up in, in Norwalk, Connecticut are always making themselves useful and justifying their existence by coming up with more changes, just like they did last year and the year before and the year before and so forth. So those are my required communications. That last one was required, but I'd like to do it anyway. And I know you've got a full agenda, I'm happy to.
Any questions?
Big questions or, I understand nobody wants auditors around anymore than they want to. I don't take it personally.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Everybody be safe tonight. It would, I came west because I'm from Richmond and it was getting, I think it was following me frankly, so high winds, especially with, especially with the 80 wind.
That brings us to public comment. Mr. Stevens, no, no public comment. Thank you. We have no, nothing on our consent agenda. We do have several public hearings, hearings this evening, excuse me. First, let me introduce our planning commission rep, which is Mr. Frank Polster. Thank you for being here. And our first public hearing will be our pre-budget public hearing. And Sharon McCarthy will give our staff remarks. And then we will open the public hearing. Good evening.
Chair, members of the board. The purpose of this public hearing tonight is to invite comments and suggestions from citizens for the upcoming budget cycle. The comments and suggestions received tonight at this pre-budget public hearing will help guide staff in preparing a budget proposal for the board's consideration. There's no action being requested at this time from the board.
Thank you so much. With that, we will open the public hearing. Do we have speakers this evening? All right. Our first speaker is Paul Scott. Good evening.
Good evening. Congratulations. And Paul says I'm being chair, that's going to be a lot of fun. I'm Paul Scott. I'm here representing Child Development Resources, which is a nonprofit founded here in James City County in 1965 with a purpose to inspire and empower children, families, and early childhood professionals to reach their full potential, whatever their challenges. And I've left you some annual reports in case we didn't already send you one to your home. We have been.
Scott, do you mind just giving the address for CDR?
Sure. Our mailing address is 150 Pointa Woods Road.
Thank you.
Out in, in the Lightfoot suburbs. We started with five kids in 1965 and now we serve over 2,000 children a year. And I checked before I came tonight, we are currently today serving 248 families here in James City County. It wasn't until 1993, however, that we had our first permanent home at the location on Pointa Woods Road. At that time, CDR staff was in the, about 20, 30 staff. And we had a project underway that was a $2 million project. And that was back in the days when you could build a 2 million or 11,000 square foot building for $2 million. So those were the days. And at that time, the county, James City County and York County generously each donated 75,000 for the completion of that facility. Williamsburg donated 60,000 and City of Pecosin 25,000. And part of that was our impact on all of those areas. That's our primary service areas, Williamsburg, James City, York, Pecosin. We have other programs that reach out across the state, but for the purposes of tonight, that's, that was a tremendous investment in the county's future and we hope that it's yielded dividends for the county. Because of the staff's hard work, we have expanded significantly. And as I mentioned, we serve 2,000 children a year here, but we've also outgrown not only the two sites we have in Norge, but we're in several rented spaces across the community. And I understand this is not the ideal format to do a detailed presentation, so I hope to have a chance to get a little farther into the details with you in the future. But we were presented with a unique opportunity a few years ago, right before COVID, was to consider consolidating and uniting all of our staff in one location and having all of our services available in a centrally located facility, which is at 312 Waller Mill Road, formerly known as the Historic Triangle Building. Without getting into a tremendous amount of detail, I will just tell you that the board has, our board has determined that the site will work for us after considerable renovations. And it will allow us to not only enhance, but expand the services that we offer. And we have designed it in a way that will allow other outside partner agencies like social services, we work with very closely, James City County Public Schools and the mental health providers here in the community to use the facility. It's also got a large open space we hope to make available for community events at, sort of honoring its history as a community building. So again, I, I hope the board would be open to a conversation about how the county may support our, our new milestone. This is going to be significant for us and I have, looking forward to sharing some more details about that. I may, I've been told I can email out a presentation, so we'll make sure that's ready for primetime and send it out to you. But thank you really for your investment as well in early childhood. I noted earlier that this property switch where you're going to be able to build an early childhood facility there at Norge Elementary is absolutely crucial for the future of this community and I applaud your efforts in that regard and hope you have a good night. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Thank you. All right. With that, seeing no more speaker cards, we will close the public hearing and no other action is required this evening. That brings us to AFD-23-0001, 1105 Stewart's Road, Barn Swamp, AFD addition. Ben?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Taylor Pruitt has applied to enroll approximately 46.95 acres of land located at 1105 Stewart's Road into the Barn Swamp Agricultural and Forested District. The parcel is, is Zoned A1, General Agricultural and Designated Rural Lands on the 2045 Comprehensive Plan. The parcel is located within one mile of the core of the Barn Swamp AFD and is directly adjacent to other parcels in the district. The applicant intends to use the property for recreational purposes and potential tenant farming on the cleared portion of the property, which is approximately five acres. The applicant does not plan to pursue any timbering activities. The AFD Advisory Committee recommended approval of the application by a vote of seven to zero at its October 19th, 2023 meeting. And the Planning Commission recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero at its December 6th, 2023 meeting. Staff finds that the proposed addition meets all state and federal, state and local requirements for inclusion in the Barn Swamp AFD and recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve the proposed addition. The applicant is unable to attend this evening, however, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have for staff. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Polster.
President, Happy New Year to you. The, the renorth speakers for the public comment and no discussions among the planning commissioners on a vote, the commission recommended approval to the Board of AFD 23001, seven to zero. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Right. With that, we will open the public hearing. Do we have any cards this evening? All right. We will close the public hearing and I'll look to the board for a discussion and/or a motion.
Motion for approval of AFD-23-0001, 1105 Stewart's Road, Barn Swamp, AFD addition.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. McGrennan?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Oh, aye. I'm sorry to hear you.
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. With that, we come to SUP-23-0026, 206 The Main Detached Accessory Apartment. Tess Lynch to give the staff presentation. Good evening, how are you?
And how are you?
Good.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Mr. Jason Buckley of ProMark Custom Homes has applied for a special use permit to allow a detached accessory apartment to be constructed within a detached accessory structure. The property is located at 206 The Main, Zoned R1 Limited Residential and is designated Low Density Residential on the 2045 Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map. The detached garage will be approximately 1,120 square feet and the proposed apartment will be 356 square feet, which is approximately 32% of the total floor area. The R1 zoning district allows detached accessory apartments as a specially permitted use in accordance with Section 2432B of the James City County Zoning Ordinance. Staff has reviewed the proposed design and finds that most requirements have been met. Although the property owners currently do not live at the residence, they are planning to move into the house in the future and a condition has been included that would require the property owners to provide confirmation that they intend to live in the house or apartment within 12 months from the issuance of the Certificate of Occupancy. Staff finds this proposal to be compatible with surrounding development and consistent with the 2045 Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval of this application. At its December 6th meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this application by a vote of seven to zero. Should the Board of Supervisors recommend approval of this application, staff has included proposed conditions for consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have and the applicant is also available. Thank you.
Are there questions for staff? So I'm curious, when you say that you, the surrounding area that, that you found no issues, are there other detached apartments and currently being used in this way around that?
That I'm aware of, no.
Okay. Thank you. No, no questions this time, other than that? All right. With that, Mr. Polster?
Our planning commission meeting, we had no speakers for the public comment and there was no discussion amongst the planning commissioners. On a voice vote, the commission recommended approval to the Board of SUP 23-0026, seven to zero. Be happy to answer any question.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you. All right. I will open the public hearing. There any speaker cards? All right. Seeing none. We'll close the public hearing and I will look for the board for discussion and/or a motion. There any?
Chair, I, I make a motion that we approve SUP 23-0026.
Thank you. We have motion, do we have any discussion?
Just curious if, if staff can give us an indication of how many such approvals we've given over the last several years? Some general sense of that?
So I don't know that we've approved any accessory apartment SUPs for this neighborhood in particular. Thinking back over the last four or five years, we've probably done two or three or four SUP applications for accessory apartments.
I know we did one, we did one recently in, in Kings Point.
Correct. And the one before that, there was one off of Centerville Road, comes to mind.
There was one back in Ford's Colony too as well.
Yes, that one I believe was by right because it was part of the main house.
Okay.
Versus being detached, as memory serves.
Thank you. The other, the other question I would have for you is, my understanding is that if the, the owner has to be living in the main, main house or the apartment, but in this case in the main house, the apartment could be rented out.
It'd be rented out for long term. If it was a short term rental, that's a separate SUP, as you all are aware, we're seeing those very frequently. This SUP is specific for the detached accessory apartment. This SUP, if granted, would not allow short term rentals.
But it could be rented to non-family members on, on a, a long-term basis.
Correct. The way the ordinance reads, as long as the owner of the premises, the family is either in the main house or in the accessory, is living on the premise, the other structure could be rented out long term.
In order to get to short-term would require a, a, a separate SUP.
Have to come back and be a whole separate SUP for short-term rentals, correct.
So, um, I, I, I asked the question, and, and I read through the Planning Commission notes and realized that, um, and, you know, do, um, there was a, the comment made about workforce housing, and I appreciate, um, that certainly as a, um, possibility, but, um, and full disclosure, I live on one thirty-five, The Main, but, um, I have dealt, as you know, um, with a house a little further down from this, um, where there is a detached garage, and, um, when the home was sold, there was great upset that, um, with the change in ownership, there was going to be, um, that it was going to be rented, and the neighbors around it were very, um, vocal, and they're not wanting that. And I'm, I'm concerned because I'm not sure that many people realize that this is a possibility. There is no other detached apartments, um, in the neighborhood, and so it's, you know, I'm, I'm failing to see where it's a use that is, you know, that it's surrounded by, and I, I just don't think that people are aware of that, and, um, the, as we've talked about on many different levels, what often happens in, in older neighborhoods that do not have mandatory HOAs, the county then becomes put in the position of being the quasi-HOA. Um, if there's an issue regarding, um, you know, something, if there should be, whatever the issue may be, um, there's, there's not, um, an HOA to step in and say, oh, you've got to do this to keep this, and da-da-da-da-dah. Um, so I, I have, I have grave concern over that, and if there were, if the one at one seventy-five John Rolfe were being rented, and we'd had a good, um, you know, we, we know that it went okay, um, you know, but I, I don't have that to fall back on, and so, and I, I thought that with the Kings Point one, there was, there was something about that it was going to be a family member, that it wasn't going, and I know that we can't, that the way the ordinance is written is, it has to either be a family member in the house or a family member in the apartment, but I, what is the, what is the goal? Is it to rent it out to help pay for the, um, for the home? I don't know what the goal is, and I don't know if the applicant wants to speak to that or not, so. Okay. Are you the applicant? Okay. That's okay.
Hi, everyone. Uh, my name's Jason. Um, I live at sixty-six six Centerville Road. I know you need an address. I'm gonna be a little nervous here, sorry. Um, yeah, so, uh, homeowners are Keith and Joanna Ducker, um, Joanna Croenline, um, her parents actually live here in town. Um, Keith and Joe's son currently goes to William &amp; Mary. Uh, they currently live in, um, California, Northern California, um, but they do plan on moving here once their daughter, um, basically when she's done with the school here in California. So, the purpose for the detached structure is actually, they don't have a garage on their existing home, so they need a, that they have a three-car garage, which, you know, that's a lot of cars, but, um, the original goal was they wanted the detached garage because they just don't have one, and supplementary, supplementary goal was that their college-age son would be able also use that space, wha, either if they were living here and he just needed some, you know, just needed, uh, something like that. I can tell you that they have no issue, they have no plans on renting it whatsoever, but I know the concern about what if they sell it and, you know, go from there.
That's right, and then, uh, their son's only at William &amp; Mary for...
Sure.
Yeah, so then what, what becomes of it at that point?
I, I do know just from speaking with them, they really like their privacy. Um, I, I think that they'd be more than happy to sign any paperwork saying that as long as they own the property, they have no interest in renting it. I, I'm confident they'd be, it doesn't speak to...
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
So then I guess the question becomes, I know you're not, you're not favorable on SUP sunsetting, but can it go with this, um, Mr. Kinsman, I'm looking at you, um, can it go with the, with the, this owner? This SUP, and then if somebody else wanted to come back and do an SUP, they, they would have to reapply?
Man, the SUP runs with the land, um, and, and so we could get a, uh, an affidavit from this owner that we could record in the courthouse that would say that, um, something that the owner of the house would only have family or the owners themselves in that accessory apartment, so I could do that, but I can't make the SUP go away based upon a ownership change.
And then the ne, the next person that would move in would not have that same obligation? They would have a detached garage with an apartment above that they could rent out if they were not living, or if they were living in the main house?
I think that the board could include an SUP condition that would say that that unit is for use of the owner or the owner's family. Um, I, I would say from a practical standpoint, that's very difficult for zoning to catch up with.
And I don't know if I would get support for that or not, but I would, I would...
Would this be something that, uh, you would, uh, like, uh, to have a little extra time on to have staff draft something to, to bring back to us, or?
We bring, what, what is your, maybe you could come, yes, um, if, if we did take a little bit more, if, if my, um, my colleagues would support that, and we were to, needed to take a couple more weeks to work through that issue, what is that going to do to your construction timeline?
Um, we, we don't even have a building permit yet, so I think the homeowner would be perfectly fine with that. Honestly, we're about a year and a half in just to get to this point because it...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
I appreciate that. Um, I would ask that, that my colleagues support that, if we would could work with staff.
You have an idea as to when you'd like to come back?
No. February? First meeting in February? Or to deferral till that point? Okay. Am I allowed to make that motion? Or what do you?
I'm, I'll be happy to make the motion. So we have, Ms. Knoll's motion is already on the floor for approval, so we would need to see whether she'd be willing to either amend it or pull it.
Of that motion for a deferral?
Make an amendment to that motion to defer for another, what, thirty days?
Postpone it.
Postponed for another thirty days.
So it's postponed to a date certain, so that would be your...
The next meeting.
February thirteenth meeting at, um, five o'clock.
Thank you.
Change my motion to that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
No problem.
All right, thank you, and I think you, you unders, okay, all right. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Hippel?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you so much, sir. And that brings us to SUP two-three zero zero two eight, nine sevens, nine two, excuse me, seven three, Richmond Road, Contractor's Office and Warehouse. Ms. Yates, how are you?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board of Supervisors. Ms. Erin Martin with Crossroad Custom Builders Incorporated has applied for a special use permit requesting to allow for the construction of an approximately seven or six thousand square foot building to be used as a contractor's office and warehouse. The subject property is located at ninety-two seventy-three Richmond Road, zoned A1, general agricultural, classified as rural lands on the 2045 Comprehensive Plan and is outside of the primary service area. The existing residence is currently occupied by a tenant and will remain as such. The professional contractors business, where current operations are off property, specializes in the building of custom homes, additions, or interior improvements. At its December sixth, two thousand twenty-three meeting, the Planning Commission voted seven to zero to recommend approval of the application with the motion to amend condition number eight. Language to state, machinery and small equipment will be stored behind the building, and heavy construction equipment will not be permitted on the property. In summary, staff finds the proposed conditions will mitigate impacts to surrounding properties and development, and finds this, that this proposal is compatible with surrounding zoning and development, and is generally consistent with the 2045 Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Ordinance. As such, staff recommends the Board of Supervisors approve this application, subject to the proposed conditions, which was included in the packet for your review. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is here as well.
Thank you so much. Questions for staff? Right, with that, Mr. Polster?
Thank you.
Uh, we did have one speaker who questioned condition eight, noise concerns and traffic issues on the stretch of Richmond Road. He also ca, uh, questioned condition number fifteen, which noted the SUP was not severable, and asked if the SUP was conveyed to the new and future owner. He expressed concerns regarding the property and future use, specifically additional commercialization across the street from his farm. At a later point in our meeting, the county attorney's office, uh, stated that the SUP remains in perpetuity except if any of the conditions were violated, and if they were, the SUP could be rescinded. Uh, there was much discussion on condition eight, the prohibition of heavy construction equipment, storage, and why heavy trucks and cement mixers, trucks were permitted. Uh, the applicant, Mr. Sean Lemon, owner of the Crossroad Custom Builders, addressed the Commission stating that there were no intention to have concrete mixer trucks, nor were there any owned by his company. He added that he had several, uh, six-foot and twelve-foot cargo trailers and one flatbed trailer for a small tractor owned by the, uh, company. Uh, Mr. Lemon stated a small area was behind the building for equipment, parking, and was not visible from the road and screened. He noted he was unsure of why the specific truck types, uh, were permitted in the conditions. Uh, he was asked if the vehicle types could be stricken from the conditions. The owner had no problem with the amended changes. The staff, as you heard from Ms. Yates, has already meant, made the amendments to condition eight. On a voice vote, the Commission recommended approval to the Board of SUP twenty-three dash zero zero two eight with a vote of seven oh, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I just asked a question. I'm, I'm not sure whether Ms. Gates or, or Mr. Polster are better positioned to answer the question. Um, I was a little confused about the, um, issue of, uh, the number of residents currently on the property, um, and I know it's, this, this proposal doesn't deal with those residents, but I'm just trying to get a sense...
Further, Ms. Yates.
How the property is being used currently.
Sure, um, a recent visit, uh, site visit shows that the property use consists of eleven non-conforming units.
And these are sort of like motel rooms or something like that?
Not motel rooms, it, it seems, um, like...
Apartments?
Just apartment units.
An apartment unit, okay.
Yes, but they are non-conforming. Okay.
Great. Any further questions?
And they're all occupied, is that right? Are they all occupied, is that?
Um, as far as full occupation, I am not aware. I can find that out for you if you would like.
Okay. With that, I will open the public hearing. Are there any speakers? Close the public hearing, and I will look to the board for discussion and/or a motion.
Yeah, well, very briefly, the, one of the concerns I had addressed in my, uh, email with, uh, to staff that the board saw, um, because I wasn't sure which watershed this was in, but I understand it's to ask, and that we don't have a, um, complete watershed plan on that, probably won't for at least another year, um, and thi, this is going to increase the, uh, impervious cover on this particular lot to about twelve percent. Um, and I, but I assume that the, uh, stormwater facilities would be able to handle, uh, most of that. Um, this is one of the reasons I just, I think it's important to have these, these plans in, in effect so we can see what the impact is going to be on a larger scale when we start looking at individual, uh, developments, but, uh, that, I'll...
Thank you. Other discussion?
I'll move the motion.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. That brings us to ordinance two-two dash zero 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 one, amendments for scenic roadway protection, and compre, we're going to do these together, comprehensive plan amendment, community character corridor, and short-term rental development standards revision. Hello?
Hello.
I wasn't sure who was going to do this. Thank you, Thomas.
You're welcome. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening to the board. At its meeting on October twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one, the Board of Supervisors unanimously adopted the two thousand forty-five James City County Comprehensive Plan, our county, our shared future. The adopted plan includes the following strategy within the land use chapter that focuses on preserving scenic roadways. Land use six point three, to help retain the character of rural lands, develop additional zoning and subdivision tools to protect and preserve scenic roadways such as Forge Road. Consider four-hundred-foot setbacks along community character corridors outside the PSA. Aligning with this adopted strategy, the Board of Supervisors adopted an initiating resolution pertaining to the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance at its November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one meeting. This resolution directs staff to consider additional requirements in both the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance to preserve scenic roadways such as Forge Road. Working with the Policy Committee, for the purpose of this ordinance, staff has identified the portion of those community character quarters located outside the primary service area within the Comprehensive Plan as those scenic roadways that are referenced within this GSA. Those roadways include Forge Road and Old Stage Road, which are both classified as open agricultural CCCs, and Richmond Road, Monticello Avenue, John Tyler Memorial Highway, and Riverview Road, the four of which are classified as wooded CCCs within the Comprehensive Plan. For the Comprehensive Plan, the focus of the open agricultural CCCs is to preserve the viewshed and integrity of farm fields and natural open spaces. The focus of wooded CCCs is to preserve natural wooded areas and encourage plantings to preserve, for screening. As such, the recommended preservation tools are fitting for each road type. The draft ordinance before you this evening proposes a four-hundred-foot setback to apply to the open agricultural CCC and enhanced buffering for commercial projects and large residential projects for wooded CCCs, and that's for those portions outside the PSA. Um, staff does note that there is a proposed amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, uh, that will be heard later on tonight, that proposes to remove the portion of Old Stage Road located outside the primary service area from the category of open ag- CCCs. Regarding the proposed setback, the proposed draft language would allow for lots with a lot depth of three hundred feet or less to have the existing seventy-five-foot setback requirement. Lots with a depth greater than three hundred feet and up to and including five hundred feet to have a setback requirement of two hundred feet, and lots with a depth greater than five hundred feet to have a proposed four-hundred-foot setback. This tiered system was specifically recommended by the board at their July twenty-fifth meeting. Furthermore, to promote flexibility for structures that are made non-conforming by this proposed setback, staff has included draft language that permit, permits said non-conforming structures to expand, provided that they are not expanding further into the setback and making that issue worse. Per, um, per the adopted Comprehensive Plan, wooded CCCs are intended to preserve natural wooded areas. As such, staff has proposed landscape buffer requirements along wooded CCCs located outside the primary service area to include a one-hundred-foot buffer average for commercial projects. Staff's also proposed a two-hundred-foot wide average buffer requirement for major residential developments along wooded CCCs located outside the primary service area, so that would be for new major subdivisions, and proposing a timbering setback at least fifty feet on property abutting wooded CCCs located outside the primary service area. Um, and I was planning to do this portion first, but if you'd like, I can go get my presentation for the, uh, short-term rental amendment as well, if that works for you.
That work for everybody?
Is that all right? Okay, there's one other option there. So in addition to that action, and I had discussed previously that the Comprehensive Plan Amendment would be revising the community character quarter list such that the por, portion of Old Stage Road located outside the PSA would no longer be included on that list. That comp plan amendment also includes, per the county attorney's recommendation and the board's initiating resolution, uh, the removal of the following rental standard for short-term rentals within the Comprehensive Plan, that they be operated in such a manner that the property owner will continue to live and reside on the property during the rental. So the other three criteria would remain in place, and we'd go through the exact same review process, um, that we do for short-term rentals. That standard would just come out of staff's staff report and review. So regarding the, um, setback recommendation, at its November first regular meeting, the Planning Commission recommended denial of the proposed amendment by a vote of five to two, and regarding the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, the Planning Commission recommended denial by a vote of six to one, and I know that was a lot of information, so I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and I appreciate your patience.
Questions? Staff?
The, um, short-term rentals. We're taking out the portion of having to live on the property.
Yes, sir. That recommendation in the Comprehensive Plan would come out.
And we're looking at to be located on a major road?
That standard would stay in place.
What are we considering a major road?
Um, I might look to Paul in case he has some guidance there, but don't think for the scope of this amendment, we had, we had laid that out, so Paul, if you don't mind coming up, appreciate it.
So really, as we've enforced it, it's really been based on the VDOT definitions of the major road, and that is essentially, um, the minor arterials, the major arterials, the collector streets, um, you know, those things that aren't really traditionally subdivision-level streets internal to a subdivision.
Okay, um, because we're talking about being located on land designated rural lands.
Correct.
But then only if it's on a major road.
Those are the standards that, that were adopted as part of this most recent comp plan in two thousand twenty-one.
We've got a lot of rural lands that are not connected to a major road, and, and a lot of water access that is not connected to a major road, so that's going to limit half of our chances of doing anything because of the major road issue. So it's kind of, you know, as I read it, and be located on land designated rural lands, neighborhood commercial, community commercial, mixed-use, or economic opportunity, and be located on the edge or corner of an existing platted subdivision rather than an internal to it. Um, you know, and, and so I'm, I'm I'm a little confused with the, the way it's being set up, or the way it's set up is, um, you know, the major road, it's going to limit a lot of people that have unique pieces of property. Me is one, if I... pieces of property. Me is one, if I was coming to it now with this, it'd be like, well, it's not on a major road. But I find mine gets rented out because it's not on a major road. People don't want to be on a major highway. They want to have that unique experience on the water, or back in the woods, or nestled somewhere, and I think we're missing that opportunity and limiting, I think it ought to be almost on a case-by-case basis, and I don't think on a major road should be something that is a definite, this is going to stop you from being able to utilize a beautiful piece of land that you have a driveway that may split up to two or three houses to go back to the piece, but it's not a major road, so that can't be used.
So in practice, since 2021, we've had quite a few applications come through. You know, we're really clear with applicants on the front end when they make, when we ask them if they want to proceed and go ahead and advertise the case and bring it forward for public hearing, that while staff's recommendation, the staff report, will be based on each of those criteria in the comp plan. Obviously, we do let them know that the Planning Commission and Board, it's policy guidance for them, and they can choose to follow that or not, but really, each site is unique. And in practice, I think the commission and the Board have appreciated staff's analysis, but they've looked at each property uniquely. I think the decision to look at this one in particular, at the recommendation of the county attorney's office, is that this one particular condition about whether or not you live on the property is unique in that that has had previous court action to where the previous court action has said that criteria and conditions specifically is not something we can do. I'll leave it to Adam to put it into better legal terms than that, but that's the only one that there's been specific. But like I say, in practice so far, the PC and Board have looked at each property uniquely.
And, you know, and that's the same thing I brought up in the past as far as living on that. And, you know, you go down to Nag's Head and go to a beach house, and you don't have Uncle Fester living in the room next to you, you've got a whole house that you can rent out, and you don't have to have that. So that was always been a glitch for me. The other one is the major road. It's gonna, if I read this, I wouldn't bring it in front of y'all because I'd be like, and y'all have to deny it as far as when you bring your report to us, but I would look at it and go, well, there's not a chance I'm going to be able to get through this because I'm not on a major road. So I wouldn't even bring it forward where I think, you know, there's, and I see that the short-term rentals is another way to promote our community and have people come visit and put money into our coffers that are going to all these other things that are out there, because they're coming to see Williamsburg, James City County, York County, and they're seeing all the attractions, but they want to stay in a unique place, just like other people want to stay in a hotel, and they're happy in a hotel. And this type person wants to be in a unique little place off to their own, and ride around and look at the community, and spend their money. And I think we're not doing justice by going, let's make it so it's only on a major road. I think it ought to be staff's opinion, maybe not written in there, but if staff says, hey, due to this fact, we can't recommend this because you have to go through all this and get permission and that sort of thing. I think staff can still do that same thing and not recommend it to our bodies as well as if this is put in there, because, you know, it's gonna, I believe, I wouldn't bring mine forward because I'd be like, there's no way I'm getting through it. There's no way. I'm done.
All right. Tell you what, it's 6:25. We have gotten word that the weather is expected to take a very nasty turn about 7 o'clock, which, that's part of our, we're just here. But I thought I might, if I could, just take a, go ahead and open the public hearing. We do have a speaker, then shut the public hearing, and then come back to Mr. Polster if that's okay with you all, so that we can get the people that may be going to speak, get them safely out to their vehicles if they choose to. Is that all right?
I'd almost think with all this, I may ask for a little bit more time with it.
Okay.
I know we've had a long time on it, but if the board is okay with that, maybe postponing this and get a little bit more information and time.
Okay. So then I need to ask if the people who have, want to speak tonight, you may speak tonight, because we will open the public hearing and then continue the public hearing if the deferral is approved, but you would not be able to speak again. So I just need to know, I'll open the public hearing.
I was going to, one bit of clarification so that if we need to chat. So there are really two issues at hand with the proposed comprehensive plan amendment. There is the issue with designating the CCCs, which is affiliated with the proposed ordinance amendment for the scenic setbacks, and then sort of the second question within that would be the change to the short-term rentals. And so for clarity for staff, just so we can sort of prepare for the remainder of the evening, the question would be, do you want to move forward maybe tonight with the scenic setback and the change in the CCC designation, and then pull out the short-term rental question and revisit that piece separately while we break the scenic easement stuff loose tonight potentially?
I would like to look at both.
Okay.
And basically look at, if I've got a house, I want to make sure that if it's in that 400 setback, and it's non-conforming after we make a vote, if it goes in that direction, it's non-conforming, I still want to be able to do what I can with that house. I know we can add on to the back, but it may, and sides and back, but it may be something in the front. So I don't want to hamstring those people because they're already existing totally. So I may want, we may want to look at, kind of discuss, maybe at a work session where this board can kind of discuss. We don't want to hamstring them, the ones that already have what they have. It's just the new stuff coming on board, you know, and I think when we talked about this, we were looking at, you know, more the lots and the larger areas, but not jeopardizing or hamstringing anybody whose houses are existing that happens to be closer. I want to make sure it's fair on both sides of that fence.
Thank you. So we'll wait for a moment on the deferral. I will open the public hearing.
We have two separate ones to do. I'll do the first one.
I'm going to do the first public hearing on ORD-22-0001, Amendment for Scenic Roadway Protection. And we have one speaker. Do you wish to speak this evening, or do you, if the, you can do both if you want, this evening? Okay. Thank you. So are there any other speakers? I will close that public, continue the public hearing. So sorry. And so go ahead and open the comprehensive plan amendment, community character corridor, and short-term rental development standards revision. And then continue that, okay? We'll continue that public hearing. We'll hear from Mr. Polster, and then we'll see if there'll be a deferral. Okay. Mr. Polster.
I had no speakers at the public hearing. This was and is a difficult issue that the Planning Commission and Board have wrestled with for over a year, with several policy committee meetings, with staff, and a follow-up session guidance with you all. We have separated the Old Stage Road piece with a consensus reached among planning commissioners. Forge Road, not so much. There were members of the commission that thought that the 400-foot buffer requirement on Forge Road was excessive. The preservation of the rural character of Forge Road in particular is impacted by restrictions on several permitted uses. There are unintended consequences to 14 residences and 22 accessory structures in the 400-foot setback. For example, the St. John Baptist Church has a depth of about 196 feet. The current parking lot for that church, if it's dirt and gravel and it ever was paved, it would be non-conforming, and they wouldn't be able to do that. If the church was destroyed a casualty, the restoration process must begin within 12 months and then be completed within 24 months. If not restored within these time limits, a new church must be built outside of the 400-foot, and of course, in this particular case, there is no room. The accessory structures within the 400-foot setback, such as livestock feeding structures, eight of the 22 accessory structures appear to be utilized for agricultural purposes, and these structures, if they collapse, are not replaceable. There is a permanent structure, a mobile home on the St. Baptist Church, which is for the pastor, and once again, if that was a casualty destroyed, it could not be replaced on that footprint, and there's nothing there to move it back. Commissioners in favor of the amendment cited the comp plan citizen surveys where rural lands preservation and viewsheds were the highest-rated items. Landowners can still use the 400-foot buffer for agricultural and animal husbandry. The viewshed impacts you've seen on the Photoshop pieces for either the two on the 400, and that was pretty clear. In summary, the Planning Commissioner wished to convey to the Board their concern on the language to address accessory structures. There were consensus on the wooded corridor component of ORD-22-001, and there were four commissioners, three to four commissioners, who were accepting of the 400-foot setback, even with the unintended consequences. On a voice vote, the commission recommended to the Board to deny the draft language of ORD-22-001 by a vote of five to two. And I can, I'll go to the next one, and then we'll get questions on both of them. On the comprehensive plan amendment for community corridor and short-term rental, there were no speakers at the public hearing. Discussion on the community character corridor revisited the 400-foot setback on Forge Road issue, but in summary, the commissioners were supportive of the revisions to the community character corridors and the modifications to the Old Stage Road. Short-term rental standards has been, and continues to be, a work in progress. The most recent changes of a five-year review of the SUP by the Board and the tempering of the owners-to-live-on-site requirement with an exception that permits a nearby agent instead of the owner to provide that oversight are two examples in that progress. The elimination of the owners-to-live-on-site requirement is a cause of concern among commissioners, leaving the commission with only three determining factors, and you just went through all three of those for it. And I will concur with Mr. Holt that the major road thing is not so much of an issue. It's a question of whether or not that major road or the road itself interferes with the subdivision itself, and we've seen that one out at Lenox as an example for that. The exception that permits, the five-year review by the supervisor, the five-year review of the SUP by the Board went a long way for the Board to eliminate inappropriate behavior on the part of renters or owners not exercising their responsibilities to their neighbors. The exception that permits a nearby agent instead of the owner was another method to ensure real-time monitoring or correction of inappropriate behavior on the part of renters. This is similar to what we expect for real-time monitoring by the management staff of a local hotel, timeshares, and commercial short-term rentals, and we require the owner to reside on the property for long-term rentals. On the issue of eliminating the requirement for the owners to live on-site for short-term rentals, there was a discussion on the reasoning behind the decision. The county attorney's office noted that the recommendation was to remove one of the performance standards for short-term rental, which required owners to live on-site. Cited was a recent opinion by the Fourth, Fifth Circuit in Louisiana that resident requirement such discriminates against interstate commerce. While James City County was not in the Fifth Circuit's jurisdiction, it was a persuasive opinion that could potentially be applied to the county. It was further noted that the county attorney's office felt the performance standard should be omitted. As a follow-up question, the question was asked if the review of nearby locality's short-term rental policies were conducted on the issue. The information was not readily available, and anecdotally, both the Hampton folks and the Richmond folks have those requirements. On a voice vote, the commission recommended approval to the Board on the community corridor standards revision six to one. On the voice vote for the commission's recommended to the Board denial on the short-term rental standards revision six to one, and I'd be happy to answer any of the questions on these subjects.
Questions? Thank you. Mr. Holt's coming back.
Madam Chair, members of the board, so because these were advertised public hearings, we'll have to postpone these to a date certain. Sort of looking at your calendar moving forward and when we could potentially be ready for a work session, it would be helpful for me to know if we can accomplish that or not, if you could clarify for me. So the way that the material was set up tonight, by changing the comprehensive plan designation on CCCs, then the proposed enhanced scenic setbacks would not apply to Old Stage Road. Remember earlier, we had done a pretty detailed analysis for both Old Stage Road and Forge Road. So my question to you, which is going to go to when we can have all this material ready, is when we come back to you on the non-conforming piece, do you want us to just bring the Forge Road materials, or do you want us to also re-bring you all of the Old Stage Road materials as well?
From my standpoint, I think we've pretty well decided on Old Stage. And so I think we would only be looking for you to bring back the stuff on Forge Road.
Forge Road.
And after talking to Mr. Polster and looking at some of the notes that he gave me earlier, I think, I think the biggest concern, I'm not as concerned about the 400-foot as what the, how we can mitigate the adverse impacts to the people that we would be making non-conforming, specifically the church. And I don't know what kind of legal flexibility we have. So that's, to me, is, that's the kind of information that I think we need to have a discussion about, to try to see if there's a way we can craft something that will protect the interests of the folks who will be making non-conforming with it better than we have right now. Is that a fair assessment?
Yeah, and that's what I'm worried about, is the church is one. If something happens to the church, our policy is basically if they don't build it a year, which they may not be able to, they can't build anything. And I want to make sure we protect the church in any structures that are now, that if this were to be approved, are non-conforming. And I want to be able to make it so that we figure out, you know, somebody may want to put a front porch on. Well, if we add to the side and the back, I don't want them to not be able to add a porch onto their house when they've had the house all this time, because we're really not looking to affect those people that are already, if it is approved, non-conforming. We want to protect them and be able to put something in place that says, you can do these things and still enjoy your house. If your house burns down, you can build it just where it's at, and make sure they're covered with this process. And also, you know, I know the Planning Commission was talking about, well, you know, you're taking X amount of land, but that's agricultural and that's where most people are going to use that for that. We're not saying you can't put your animals, you can't do agriculture work and all that in that 400 feet. You can continue doing what you're doing right now on it. But while we work through this process, also, we're going to get pressure on Forge Road. I can guarantee it. And while we work on this process, I don't want something to come before us in the next two weeks, three weeks, or whatever, to try to get ahead of us. So I'd like, you know, for this board to, until we figure this out, we can accept an application. I don't think we have to, but we won't do anything on it until after we figure out what we're doing here. I don't want something getting right in the middle of it and going, well, I put this in, and I have a conceptual of this, and I'm thinking we're going to do that, and we haven't made a decision on what we're actually going to do here. So I think we ought to make sure, like we did years ago, we stopped a few things, we'll figure this out, and then we'll bring them back. So Adam, if you could help me with that part of the, how we negotiate that, so, you know, we make sure if somebody brings that forward, or gonna bring something forward to us, that we let them know ahead of time, we have to figure this issue out first before we go into something else.
Depending on how long the Board wants to take with this, so if you recall, the Board put out a resolution previously when we were redoing the comp plan, because that was a long process, and there was about a year where the Board was not going to take those applications. So we wanted to let everybody know that was going to happen. It's within the Board's purview, really, to put something on its agenda or not within a year. So if this is something the Board's going to take up in a month or two, then I don't know that you need a formal resolution telling people not to. know that you need a formal resolution telling people not to, it can just be agreement of the board, that they're not going to put it on an agenda. If it's something that you foresee being a six-month process or longer, then a resolution letting applicants know might be helpful.
All, how much time do you think you'll need?
Sure, and so, I think that's fine, you know, I think with some of the work that we've done before, you know, and again, not to be debated or thought through tonight, just as a little bit of foreshadowing, I really think the only other option, other than the materials presented in the staff pack tonight, legally, the only other option we're probably going to have to try to get at that, that we'll bring back to you, is the idea of rezoning specific properties in an overlay district. I think that's the only other sort of legal mechanism and tool, at least that I recall with the work that we've done so far. Let us repackage that up for you. I'm always quick to try to get stuff back to you all, so you all, tell me if you want me to slow down a little bit, you know, conceivably, we could have materials ready for your February 27 business meeting with the idea that in terms of getting stuff amended, possibly re-advertising, we'd have to think through all that. The earliest, I would recommend postponing this item until your April 9 regular meeting, and that would give us time to get through at least a first discussion with you on February 27. If you want to discuss it longer from then, we can do another postponement, but that would be the quickest. But since we have to postpone to a date certain, that would be my recommendation for this evening.
So for the postponement, the...
Would the postponement be to the work session?
Work session.
Okay, just to the...
The advertised public hearing, so...
To the April...
April 9 regular meeting, yes.
I will ask that these items all be postponed till the April 9 regular board meeting, if that's okay with the members.
Okay, so that's a motion?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair.
And Mr. Stevens?
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion cares.
Okay, that brings us to ordinance to amend and reordain Chapter 20, Taxation of the Code of the County of James City, Virginia by amending Article 1, Exemption of Certain Persons from Real Estate Taxes, Section 20-10, Qualifications for Exemption in Section 20-11, Amount of Exemption. Mr. Bradshaw, Commissioner of the Revenue. Good evening.
Good evening. Madam Chair, members of the board, it's always my pleasure to come before you, especially when I've got something that is going to benefit citizens of the county by extending and enhancing a program that actually works. James City County has provided tax relief to its elderly and disabled homeowners since 1973. County program is designed to assist those individuals with limited resources to remain in their homes without having an undue tax burden. Program does require an annual application, including documentation to verify qualifying assets and income. Since its beginning, numerous changes have been made to the program, both from the standpoint of qualifications and the benefit that would accrue to the homeowner. You have before you this evening, two ordinances, one which will adjust the income level available as a requirement, and the other that will adjust the benefits to the taxpayer. The first one, which is for the income, will raise the income level from $45,000 of household income up to $55,000. This reflects a change in the federal statute, which estimates median household income within a jurisdiction. The second is to raise the benefit from the taxes on the first $120,000 of value to the taxes on the first $150,000 of value. And this kind of reflects the changes we have seen in assessed values within our jurisdiction. The benefit would rise from approximately $1,000 now, per individual, to approximately $1,250. There is a 25% increase per person, and we are, would expect that there would be more applicants.
Questions? At we will open public hearing. Any speakers? Close the public hearing, and look to the board for a motion or questions.
I had one question. It was, the B, the net combined financial worth actually goes, requirement goes from 200 down to 150?
No.
That's what...
200, that, no.
Goes from 150 to 200?
No, it's already at 200.
Already at 200, okay, well, I, our agenda, the draft resolution, the strike-through resolution shows 150, that's why I was curious. I want to make sure that our resolution isn't, in fact, correct.
The benefit is supposed to rise from 100, from the first $120,000 of value to 150.
No, this was the total assets.
Total assets is supposed to remain at $200,000.
Okay, does that, check, Jason, if you'd check me and see if I'm wrong, but it looks like that's... Sitting there looking at that resolution as we went through.
Yeah, the resolution that's in front of you is incorrect. Under Section 2010, it's not supposed to change, that strike-through shouldn't be there.
Okay.
That one should stay at 200,000. What you're changing is...
The other two.
2011 goes to 150, and we'll make that change on the red line version of it.
Okay, that's, I just want to make sure we got that squared away. Okay.
Thank you.
For approval?
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion cares.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw. That brings us to, we have no board considerations, board request and directives.
It's raining.
Real quick, I'm sorry.
Ms. Knoll? Do you have anything? Okay.
We're quiet down here.
I'm just going to mention two, two things very quickly that I had the opportunity to participate in last week. The first was dedication of new expanded space at McCall Circle for the Martha W. Goodson Training Center for people who are dealing with loved ones who are experiencing dementia. And the generosity of the Goodson family in providing the assistance that allows this facility to emerge is just remarkable. It means training for people who are caring for people with dementia, whether they are CNAs and other medical professionals, or they are family members who are in need of the kind of support that can sometimes be critically important to make sure that that person is not putting undue pressure and strain, and has somebody that they can turn to. I would mention that the center is named after Martha W. Goodson, whose parents, Al and Murph White, were the owners of Mainland Farm, and worked with us to preserve that first farmland on the mainland of America. And so, very much appreciate their involvement in this and their choice of location in James City County for this training through Riverside Hospital. And secondly, then had the opportunity the next morning to address the Emerging Leaders Academy graduation ceremony, where 16 of our county employees were celebrated for their performance in undergoing training to help them become more effective in their positions and to move on in the future into greater success. A remarkable statistic about people who have participated in this program over the last four years, it is a program that we do in conjunction with Virginia Tech, is that 42% of the graduates have been promoted in their positions since taking that training academy. So I think it was a great opportunity to hear the work that they'd been undertaking and the ability to present very informed materials on lots of things, including board matters that the board will consider important in terms of employee relations. Just with that.
Yeah, I heard my friend Amanda Dresser-Gata saw you at this.
Yes, she did.
Her son hadn't taken your class yet, but that's come, I'm sure.
I had one thing, if, Mr. Stevens, if we have that photo that we could put up?
I believe we do, yes, sir.
Okay. Only thing I have is a photo that I wanted to share with the community. As you may remember, back in December, we had the Home for the Holidays program, and we sent 43 service members home with travel stipends. And thanks to Captain Scott Ray, who was the commander out there, these are the folks that didn't get to go home for Christmas. And what they did was they came to Centerra Hospital on Christmas Day and served meals to patients and staff. And they indicated that they would do this on an annual basis. So I think it's a wonderful example of the relationship between the military community and the local community, and I want to make sure we extend our sincere thanks to the Coast Guard folks who did this, and tell them how much we really appreciate it. And one of the things we're going to be looking at next year is, in addition to potentially money to help the people going home, is maybe putting together some sort of program with little Christmas goodie bags for the folks who can't go home and that are staying here. They're helping us like that, I'd like to help them out as well. So that's just to put things in perspective with our local community out there.
Thank you for all your work that you did on that. Ms. Knoll, welcome to your first meeting, you did great, you even ran JCSA, way to go, trial by fire.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
And welcome to the board, we're glad you're here. I would, just one quick announcement this evening, you all know I'm Chair of Visit Williamsburg. We, Victoria Semino, who is our CEO, did decide that she was going to pursue another endeavor, and so her last day with Visit Williamsburg was January 2. She is still here through the 16th, helping consult with Julia Smith Young, who is our interim CEO, but we are launching a national search here next week. And I have to give Ms. Semino a lot of credit, our destination is so much better off than we were when Visit Williamsburg was first, was first brought to the surface, and she had to really start out doing everything, ordering the letterhead. So, but we just had our finance meeting this morning, and as you know, the state runs very far behind, but November was, we had very good visitation, we had good transient tax, good sales tax, so we are still, we are seeing some definite benefits from all the efforts that are being done. But I did want to let the community know and thank Ms. Semino for that. Report to the county administrator.
Madam Chair, the only thing I'd like to mention, we have advertised, we are holding a community conversation Wednesday, January 31 at 6:00 PM at Legacy Hall in Newtown. Really, the topics would be the regional sports complex, trash consolidation, and the proposed government center, and then Chief Jameson will give an update, a public safety update. So again, January 31, it's a Wednesday, 6:00 PM, Legacy Hall, invite our residents to attend and have some dialogue related to it.
6:00 PM, you said?
6:00 PM, yes, sir.
I'm so happy those are back, that's great. So, with that, we do have several appointments, we can either put those off to our next meeting, or we can go ahead and go into closed session and do those appointments. I will look to what you all would like to do. You want to do them?
Let's do it.
Okay, all right. I need a motion to enter closed session for the following consideration of a personnel matter, the appointment of individuals to county boards under commissions pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia. Appointment, Williamsburg Area Transit Authority Board of Directors. Appointments, VPPSA Board of Directors. Appointments, Historic Triangle Bicycle Advisory Committee. Appointments, Board of Equalization. Appointments, Planning Commission. Appointment, Williamsburg Regional Library Board of Trustees. Mr. Stevens, is there a motion?
No motion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
All right, we are... Come out of closed session, I need a motion to certify that we did what we were supposed to do.
Madam Chairman, I move to certify that we only spoke about those items we indicated we could speak about going into closed session.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Hey, the board, I'll make a motion for the appointment of the following individuals. Ms. Diane Finney, for a, as alternate to the water board, there's no term limit on that one. For appointments to the VIPSa Board, General Services Manager Grace Boone, and Director of Solid Waste, Bob Ditman, to serve from January 1, 24 through 31 December 26. For the Bicycle Advisory Committee, Grace Pacetta, to serve from January 1, 24 through 31 December 25, to make recommendations to the Circuit Court Judge for individuals for the Board of Equalization. Michael Grimes, Vicki Nace, Christopher Hendrick, and Robert Singley Jr., terms of January 1, 24 through 31 December 27. For Planning Commission, for the Palatin District, Michael Scott May, from the present to 31 January 26, fulfilling the rest of the term of Mr. Richard Croft. And for Stonehouse, Mr. Jay Iverson, for a term, 1 February 24 through 31 January 28. And for the Library Board, Mr. Eugene Bruss, from current time through June 30, 2025.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stevens?
And Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Thank you so much. With that, I need a motion to adjourn until 1:00 p.m. on January 23, 2024, for the business meeting.
Motion?
Motion, yeah.
All right, Mr. Stevens?
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.